Good evening. I would like to call the July 10, 2017 Belbrook City Council Meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller is absent tonight. Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Schweller?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to excuse Mr. Schweller, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of the City Council work session and regular meeting minutes of June 26, 2017. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We do have a couple on the agenda this evening. We'd first like to start with Chief Jim Nythard to come up and present the National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Award.
Good evening. Thanks a lot for having this opportunity to come up and present this certificate to Lieutenant Lueker. He represents a lot of members on this fire department that have taken upon themselves to further their education and their knowledge, and it's a great thing for this department as well as the community. And so without further ado, I'll let Lieutenant Lueker talk about the program itself. I present this certificate. It's suitable for framing, as you can see. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. I guess first, I just want to thank several people, or actually a lot of people. My family, for one, for supporting me for the four years that I went through this program. My in-laws that are back there for watching my children while I was gone for almost three months for this program. My family, or my mom and dad back there. And then, of course, the council and the city manager, who really did support me a lot through this program. And quite often, you don't see that a lot of the time from many cities that will support people going through this program. So I just want to say thank you very much for supporting me the four years to go through this. The National Fire Academy is in Evansburg, Maryland. It's basically, each state has their own little fire academy, but this is where they get all the source, resources from, is the national. So the program I went through is basically a four-year program. We go out there for two weeks a year, study out there. And then when we come back, we'd have six months to work on a project, a research project to help further our organization. And then we would present that for grade. Just long as you passed it, you got to go to the next year. So.
Congratulations.
But like I said, I want to thank everybody. Like I said, especially council and the city manager and the chief. So, thank you very much.
I would like to congratulate, congratulate, can't talk tonight, congratulate the lieutenant putting in all that hard work. Belbrook has a great fire department. We have, you know, most people don't understand, I know some of us were walking around and they didn't even understand we had full-time police and fire, or at least fire, and thought it was all volunteers. So thank you, and thank you what you guys do for our citizens of Belbrook. Anyone else on council?
I appreciate you doing this. It also looks good for the younger firefighters. Helps elevate everything, so, thank you.
And I'd also echo that professional accreditation in the service is extremely important these days and goes to the validity of training and how training is very important to perform or to process you for, you know, professionalism in the fire service. So, good luck on that. Appreciate that.
Congratulations. Congratulations, and, you know, we saw some of the projects and stuff that you're working on over the years, so we kept hearing that you're working on this project or that project, so appreciate all that hard work.
So thank you very much. We do have one other thing on the mayor's announcement list this evening. We have Mr. Sparks and Mr. Cedar with the Belbrook Lions Club. We have a festival coming up in a few weeks, and this will be the last meeting before our Lions Club Festival. I think they'd like to talk a little bit about some of the changes to the festival and some of the ongoings and, I'm guessing, calendar of events.
My name's Tim Seider. I'm the new president. This came like last week for the present for the Lions Club next year. Some of our new things we're doing this year for the festival is, because everybody knows last year we kept kind of raining out every three nights, so it was kind of pretty bad for us. So this year, we've kind of changed things to kind of make up for last year, so. Some of the new things are the food tents being moved up on blacktops and water, moving things closer together, kind of the areas, keep everybody in kind of one area. We've got a lot of new games coming this year, trying to get some more of the teenagers and all that. And probably one of the newest things we're doing this year, we've acquired, we're going to have a beer garden. So, that's our biggest thing, and we, it's going to be fenced in, controlled, so of course everyone 21 years and older grab beer and wine. So, we need a lot of volunteers, is one thing we're asking for, because the Lions Club, a lot of our members are older, and we've lost a few the last couple of months, unfortunately, so. But we're hoping that goes really well, so we've been working on that, clean the area up. We want to keep it a family thing, where the parents can come, bring their kids, the parents will stay, because most of the, we found in the last past years, most of the kids, parents drop them off and leave, leave and come back, so we want to take the family, the parents there. We'll be having some live music, we're going to try to this year, I mean, just, probably this year we'll be doing a DJ recording, hopefully next couple of years, or maybe having a live band down the road. That's what for us, for having to be recording and all that, so. But, other than that, we're doing really well, so just.
And what are the dates again? Just so everyone knows.
It's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It's August 17th, 18th, and 19th. And we have the parade Saturday afternoon at 4:00, if we start downtown Belbrook, and then we get right to the festival. Saturday is our big day, we have the car show and all that, and then we have the drawing for our grand prize that night for the $10,000. So, that's always a big thing for us, so.
And Thursday, it starts?
Thursday, between 5:00 and 6:00 usually. I mean, the food tent usually starts, that's the big thing usually on Thursday night, if you get a really good meal for a decent price.
And it'll season, I can't remember, pork chops or fish? Fish fried?
Usually pork chops, I believe, are Thursday.
Yeah.
There's also a meat subs, like Salisbury steak he usually does. And then Friday night, it's usually pork chops, and then fish.
The fish.
And then Saturday is usually the chicken.
Chicken.
So that's a big one. Like corn on the cob and all that.
And Friday also should start at 5:00 or 6:00?
Friday's usually around 5:00 or 6:00, yes.
Yeah.
A lot of times people go off work and then volunteers come and all that and get things done, so. We have a lot of high school kids who help, and that's the community hours, and all that. And everything that we try to make, I mean, it all goes back to the community. We give stuff at the fire department, police department, Sugar Creek, and Belbrook. Everything's back to schools. We do scholarships for a lot of students, and we do a lot for the band, football, and all that, so. The more we make, the more we can give back. Anybody else have any questions?
Anyone on council?
I've been going to Lions Club Festival for as long as I've been in Belbrook. It's not summer without it, so.
Yeah.
It's a little different this year.
Hopefully this year's a little different, so hopefully it gets good.
Well, and I actually like that the gambling's going to be separate from the kids now.
Right.
It'll be in the enclosed area, where the kids will have their games, because I'm sure that all being open, and I've been there many, many years, it's tough to keep the kids
It is.
away from the gambling, and this way, they're going to be in an enclosed area with fence.
Correct. You can still see, you can still see through if the kids are.
Yeah, so there'll be a clear definition between 21 and older.
Correct.
And the kids.
And so what, the police will be right in front, they set you to control right by the fence there, so.
Yeah.
We're bringing the rides in closer, so everything will be kind of, moving the other food, like the trailers that we do, are going to be moved closer to the rides and all that, so.
Great.
There's hopefully no rain this year. That's our plan.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Is the beer garden going to be same hours as the festival?
Um.
How's that going to work?
Generally, 6:00 start is what we're doing.
Okay.
Usually closed down at the exact same time as the festival hours that we, during the, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, it's 10:30, and then 11:00 with the drawing, may go as late as 11:30, and then.
And there is no Sunday, so.
No, no, Sunday's cleaned up, so. Tear it down cleanly.
Is it craft beer or?
Um, it's going to be done for the Dublin Pub, so do you know more about?
Steve, who has done the Sugar Maple for two years, is going to be doing ours. Excuse me, Greg? If you can go to the podium, please.
Yeah, no, yeah. You're talking to us and our viewing public will not hear you because of the.
So, Steve, who has done it for Sugar Maple, will be doing ours too.
Okay.
So he knows the orchestration of how to make it, so what you saw at Sugar Maple will be very similar to what you'll see.
Okay.
At.
Yeah, because it's craft beer, it's Sugar Maple, I didn't know if it was craft beer.
It is craft beer, and the only difference is we applied for a license to allow wine, which was a thing that was a critique from the Sugar Maple Festival, so that will, that will change.
Greg.
Good. Anyone else on council?
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations for being president.
Hopefully see a lot of you there, hopefully, so.
Oh, yeah.
I will be there, so.
So that's a good, good time, hopefully. Might want $10,000, should be good thing.
Got a few already.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have a pretty busy agenda this evening. We'll start with public hearings, ordinance number 2017-4. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2017-4, an ordinance authorizing the city manager slash finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2018 to the Green County Auditor, where the city is required to prepare and submit the tax budget for 2018 to the Green County Auditor no later than July 20, 2017, following a public hearing. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the tax budget for fiscal year 2018, as attached hereto, be approved for the submission to the Green County Auditor to guarantee the city's eligibility for the allocation of local government funds in 2018. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law, attached as the actual tax budget. Mr. Schlauchhead, is there anything that you wanted to add on the?
No, this is just an annual requirement that the county auditor places upon us. This is what establishes the levies that will be, the residents will play next year, and then it'll also establish our chair for the local government fund. So, once this is submitted, then they can begin their budgetary process, and we don't use these specific numbers during our budgetary process. We'll refine these numbers and have more input on them as we go into the 2018 budget process later this year.
Any other questions on council? I know we do this every year.
I don't know.
Okay, this is public hearing, so does anyone in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to pass Resolution 2017-4?
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2017-4.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt Ordinance 2017-4, an ordinance authorizing the city manager, finance director, to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2018 to the Green County Auditor, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. We have one more public hearing ordinance tonight, ordinance 2017-5. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Ordinance number 2017-5, an ordinance deleting Chapter 848 Massage Establishments and Technicians of the Belbrook Municipal Code in its entirety and replacing with Chapter 848 Massage Service Establishments. Whereas the city of Belbrook has enacted Chapter 848 of the Belbrook Municipal Code, which is entitled Massage Establishments and Technicians, and whereas the purpose of Chapter 848 is to protect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Belbrook, and whereas the city desires to delete the entire content of Chapter 848 and replace it in its entirety with new regulations. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the following sections of 848 of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. There are 11 different sections of 848, and then there are Section 2, that the following additions of Chapter 848 Massage Service Establishments of the Belbrook Municipal Code be approved with additions shown by italics and underlined. And there are 10 different new sections that are added. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, the original code section was adopted in 1983. In that time, I don't know that it's been used a lot, but within the last year, we had a business that came in that was maybe questionable about their uses, so we were able to use the existing ordinance to help regulate that business. But what we found is there were some things within that, those regulations, that needed to be updated. So we looked around, and then actually, the city of Springboro had recently just updated their code, actually adopted this. They did not have anything, so they adopted this. So we, we used what their work and we customized it to meet our needs. But this, again, will just let us regulate the businesses and make sure that we have the right type of businesses within the community.
Any comments on council? This is a public hearing. Well, I generally don't like new regulations. I think this is called for, especially because of the situation we may or may not have had, and it doesn't look all that difficult to comply, so it just gives us recourse to be able to have the little teeth in it and be able to make some decisions. With that, would anyone in the audience like to give any input? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. May I have a motion to approve Ordinance number 2017-5?
I move that we adopt Ordinance number 2017-5.
May I have a second?
A second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt Ordinance number 2017-5, an ordinance deleting Chapter 848 Massage Establishments and Technicians of the Belbrook Municipal Code in its entirety and replacing, and replacing with Chapter 848 Massage Service Establishments, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, we have one introduction of ordinance this evening, ordinance number 2017-6. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook Ordinance number 2017-6, an ordinance amending Ordinance 2016-14 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for 2017 to reflect additional costs in some line items and reduce costs in other line items. Whereas, the city of Belbrook adopted the 2017 annual budget based on the best information available at the time, and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some line items and reduced costs are projected in other line items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the appropriation levels in several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. And there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 levels. The grand total of all funds is a supplemental appropriations of reduction of $82,971 in these funds. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Yes?
Yes, periodically, we will amend our appropriations based on new information that comes up during the year. In this case, we are actually reducing the appropriations. The biggest portion of that in the water fund is reducing the other expenses by over $101,000. We have the Upper Hillside Water Main Project that we are in the middle of engineering now. We will bid it out later this year, but the reality is, this was for construction administration services, so the actual, somebody on site when the construction, construction's not going to happen until 2018. So we will not spend that money, we won't encumber that money until 2018. So we removed it from this year's appropriations, we'll include it in next year's budget when the time comes. So, most of the other ones are just minor changes for things that happen throughout the year, that increases, decreases that we have that we know are going to happen, and we just amend it to try to stay as true to our budget as we can.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to introduce Ordinance number 2017-6?
Yes, I move that we introduce the ordinance 2017-6.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to introduce Ordinance number 2017-6, an ordinance amending Ordinance 2016-14 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for 2017 to reflect additional cost in some line items and reduce cost in other line items, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 2017-R. Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2017-R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the pay scales of city positions not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to adjust pay scales for city positions which are not covered by collective bargaining agreement, and whereas the city reviews wage rates for its employees on an annual basis, and whereas the wages of certain employees will fall outside the new pay scales and ranges for certain positions, and the city manager shall have the authority to adjust those specific wages as necessary, including one-time lump-sum payments, and whereas pay scales for elected officials, the clerk of consul and city manager will not be adjusted, and whereas the city wishes to incorporate the wage provisions to the general personnel policies of the city. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the city manager is hereby authorized to adjust wage, wages for certain positions per the attached pay scales and ranges effective August 1, 2017. Section 2, that the attached pay scales and ranges be approved as presented. Section 3, that the city manager has the authority to adjust the wages of certain employees that fall outside the new pay scale and ranges for their positions as necessary, including one-time lump-sum payments, and 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And I believe that the increases here for the non-union employees follow suit with the 2.75% increase given in what's recently here?
Correct. The 2, all, the ranges were adjusted by 2.75%, which was the same amount for the recently passed collective bargaining agreement with the police union for August 1st. So it's similar. There are a couple ranges that didn't get adjusted, some of our part-time ranges, we generally don't adjust, they have a range, and then they can move within that range. And then the other, our part-time firefighters and medics and EMTs, we did adjust those ranges by, the first step on those was $10 an hour, and realistically, you can't get anybody that you want coming to your house to save your life for $10 an hour, so we bumped those up just a little bit to get people, to try to attract people. Wages aren't the reason we're not attracting people, but at least we want to pay them a fair wage for the time that they're putting in when they're here. So, those are the adjustments that we're recommending for approval here, and they will take effect on August 1st.
Any questions? I know we've talked about this numerous times. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-R?
I move to approve the resolution.
And a second?
A second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to adopt Resolution 2017-R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the pay scales of city positions not covered by collective bargaining agreement, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, Resolution 2017-S. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2017-S, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for school security. Whereas, the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Belbrook Police Department continue its increased presence at schools within the city limits beyond its normal patrol, and whereas the school district agreed to compensate the city for this increased presence, and whereas the agreement will be effective for the 2017, 2018 school year. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is an agreement with the schools for increased presence during the day. This is really just a renewal of the current agreement that we had for the previous two years. The school reimburses the city $16,000 for the school year for these services. We did have a few conversations with the school district. They have requested a school resource officer, a full-time school resource officer. That will be included in the levy. If the levy passes in November, that we'll talk about here in a little bit, we will be able to provide that full-time school resource officer. We'll have to amend this contract at that point if that were to happen, but for now, at least for the beginning of the school year, we will continue the way we've handled it the last several years.
Any questions on council? Yeah, have we been able to abide, keep up four hours per day? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we do a pretty good job. Sometimes we have, there are circumstances that don't allow that to happen, but for the most part, we do a very good job with the resources we have to have a presence at one of the school properties during that time.
Do you alternate amongst the four schools?
Yes. I mean, we don't, we don't, because the high school and the middle school are in the township, we don't have to do, do those, but we do between, primarily between Stephen Bell and BCI.
And BCI.
But then there's also the academy down here.
Yeah.
And then there's the Education Center where the superintendent's office is, but that's where the preschool is, too. So those are the primary, the four buildings that we go through.
I always get confused what the line is up there between those buildings.
But no, we do our best to meet the four hours that we, per the contract here, and the schools have been satisfied with what we've been able to do, but they just like to have even more.
What is a, unless this would be better discussed later, but what does a full-time resource officer, what kind of increased services are they looking for?
They just want somebody literally there all the time. So at one of those facilities, that person would be there pretty much every day during school hours. So they, it's just, it's a safety measure, and it's a, it's something that schools are doing to help, there's, you can't have somebody in every building all the time, but it, at least increases the unpredictability about who's going to be where when, and if somebody were to attempt something, then there's, there's the possibility somebody's there. And the other thing is just, I think, for us, I think the best part of it is the ability to have one of our officers in the schools and for the students to recognize that these officers are there for them, and if they need help with anything, they can come to that officer.
All of the kids recognize the officers. I mean, when my kids come down to the parade, and they're like, "Oh, there's, there's the officer, he was at my school," you know, they do, I mean, it's, it's a really good, what we do now is really good, and I think doing more would also be.
Right. And I think that awareness of them, that the police are there for them, I think, is another benefit to them.
There's good interaction between the kids and the police officers.
Now Sugar Creek, they're involved in that, too, right?
Yes, they do have a full-time school resource officer at the high school and middle school, so they already have that. In a lot of communities, that's, you see it definitely at the high school, some at the middle school. You don't see it at the younger grades as much, but I think, just unfortunately, given You don't see it at the younger grades as much, but I, I think, just unfortunately, given the, the times that we're in, I think it's, uh, uh, the schools recognize it as something of, of value for them.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution 2017 dash S?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2017 dash S.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt resolution 2017 dash S, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District for, for school security, seconded by Mrs. Middlestetter. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution 2017 dash T. Mr. Greenwood?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2017 dash T, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games. Whereas the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Bellebrook Police Department provide police officers in an extra duty capacity at Bellebrook High School home football games. And whereas the school district agreed to compensate the city for this extra duty. And whereas the agreement will be effective for the 2017 home football season. Now therefore, the City of Bellebrook hereby resolves section one, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District. Section two, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, this is a, uh, similar contract, uh, with the schools, but it's just for the home football games. Uh, we provide, uh, three officers, uh, up there, uh, extra officers beyond our normal capacity. Um, and the school reimburses us for a portion of those costs. They, they, it does not cover the full cost, but it does reimburse a, a portion of those costs to have those three officers up there that are on overtime. Um, I think it's good that our officers are the ones doing it, it's not a private security firm. They, they may have private security there, but it's our officers that are up there. On a, on a Friday night in the fall, the biggest event in the community is at that football stadium. So, um, it, it's, it's good to have our three extra officers plus the other officers that are on duty, uh, available, uh, for, for that event. So this is a good arrangement that we get, uh, a good portion of our costs covered, but, uh, the schools get our, uh, police officers at their events.
Any other questions on council? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution 2017 dash T?
Uh, I'd like to make a resolution, or adopt resolution number 2017 dash T.
May I have a second?
Second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt resolution 2017 dash T, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Bellebrook Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, one more resolution, resolution 2017 dash U. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 2017 dash U, a resolution to proceed to a levy, to levy a tax in excess of the ten, ten mil limitation. The City of Bellebrook, Green County, Ohio, met in regular session on July tenth, of July, uh, tenth of July, 2017 in Bellebrook City Council chambers with the following members present, Robert Baird, Mayor, Nick Edwards, Council Member, Forrest Greenwood, Council Member, Darrell McGill, Council Member, Elaine Middlestetter, Council Member, and Donna Seager Lawson, Council Member. Whereas the amount of taxes which may be raised with the, within the ten, ten mil limitation will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the said City of Bellebrook, Green County, Ohio. Now therefore, the City of Bellebrook hereby resolves section one, that with two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring that it is necessary to leviate tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the benefit of the City of Bellebrook for the purpose of providing current operating expenses of the general fund at a rate not to exceed three mils for each of one dollar valuation, which amounts to thirty cents for each one hundred dollars of valuation for an addition of three point zero mils to constitute a tax of three point zero mils for a five-year period of time commencing in the tax year 2017 and first collected in tax year 2018. Section two, that the question of the levy additional taxes be submitted to the electors of said City of Bellebrook at the general election to be held at the usual voting places within the said City of Bellebrook on the seventh day of November, 2017. The ballot shall be in the following form, proposed tax levy, additional, City of Bellebrook, a majority affirmative, affirmative vote is necessary for passage. An additional tax for the benefit of the City of Bellebrook for the purpose of providing current operating expenses at the rate not exceeding three point zero mils for each one dollar valuation, which amounts to point, which amounts to thirty cents for each one hundred dollars of valuation for a five-year period of time commencing in tax year 2017, first due in calendar year 2018. There's a box for for the levy and against the tax levy. Section three, that said levy be placed on the tax list of the current year after the February settlement, next succeeding the election of, if a majority of the electors voting thereon vote in favor thereof. Section four, that the clerk of the City of Bellebrook be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Board of Elections, Green County, Ohio, immediately after its passage and notify said Board of Elections to cause notice of election on the question of levying tax, said tax to be given as required by law. Section five, that this resolution take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Yes, uh, as we've, uh, talked about previously, this is the, uh, second piece of legislation that's required to place a levy on the ballot. Uh, the first one was passed at the last meeting. Uh, we did receive the certification from the Green County Auditor that certifies that this three mil levy will generate, uh, five hundred and one thousand dollars based on our current, uh, tax valuation. Um, with that and with the approval of this resolution tonight, we will be able to place this, uh, additional levy on the ballot in November. Council knows, we've talked about this on, uh, multiple occasions, uh, really over the last several years about the need, uh, the coming need for this, uh, additional tax levy. Spent a lot of time during the budget process and other times to, uh, identify the exact amount and, uh, the need for this. Uh, over the coming months, once this has been, uh, placed on the ballot, we'll, we'll provide a lot of information to the residents about, uh, why the need for this levy is here and, and what it's going to be used for and, and things of that nature. Uh, but this action tonight will, uh, formally allow us to place it on the ballot for November.
And we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars of around nine-dollar increase?
Uh, yes, for each hundred thousand dollars of valuation, the resident will pay just under nine dollars.
Yeah, a little under nine dollars.
Yes.
Um, I know we've talked about it a few times. Any other members on council have any questions regarding it this evening?
Mayor?
Oh, Mayor.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution 2017 dash U?
I'll make a resol, an, a motion to adopt resolution number 2017 dash U.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt resolution 2017 dash U, a resolution to proceed to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation, seconded by Mrs. Seager Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, that is all we have for resolution, introduction of ordinances and public hearings. We do have a city manager report, Mr. Flackhead.
Uh, yes, uh, we've talked about previously, uh, the city did a joint bid for waste collection services. Um, uh, this year, uh, we did joint bid with, uh, the cities of Miami'sburg and Brookville. Uh, and then the city of West Carrollton was in for recycling only, only. Uh, those bids were opened, uh, two weeks ago, um, and, uh, there was only one bid received. It was from Runkie, who is our current carrier. Their bid, uh, effectively is thirteen dollars and eighty-six, thirteen dollars and eighty-six cents per residence per month. Um, our current rate is thirteen dollars and eleven cents for the same service. Uh, the one thing with that though, that is a five point seven two percent increase, but it is locked for five years. So there'll be no increase, uh, for that five-year period. So, um, in the future, we will, we will have, uh, legislation to approve that, to enter into a contract. But I just wanted to share that with, uh, with council this evening, uh, that we will be recommending that approval, uh, here in the near future. Uh, and the good thing is because it's Runkie and we, we generally had very good service with Runkie. Uh, I, I get far fewer complaints than we did with our previous haulers. Uh, so there'll be no transition period with, uh, swapping out containers and all the things that go with that, uh, which will be good. Uh, our current rate that we charge residents is only thirteen dollars, uh, per month. But we have a bit of a, a, a reserve within the waste collection fund. We won't have to adjust that rate immediately. We will, at some point, we'll have to increase that rate. Uh, but now having this rate locked in for a five-year period will allow us to know exactly when we need to, to increase that.
And that is very, very affordable compared to at least the cities I've talked to.
Yes.
Or someone in the township, um, because I know they're paying probably twenty or.
Probably closer to twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars a month. And ours is only thirteen. So, uh, well, almost fourteen, but it won't be fourteen.
The residents will, right, the residents will still pay thirteen at least in the short term.
Only thirteen for a while, so.
Is that, is that based on just how close our houses are and the prux, the size of the city? Is that how, I mean, that's a big difference. I mean, I know township's a lot larger, but.
Well, there, there's, with us, they have, they have twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred households that they have a contract for and they are the only hauler in that. In the township, the neighbors next to each other can have different haulers. So they could have multiple, uh, haulers going up and down the street on different days, which it really is a detriment to the streets and everything else. But, um, yes, that, part of it is because we are fairly compact, but we, we do go with one hauler. They pick up everybody within the community, uh, and we can guarantee that, that part of the contract for them. So that, that makes it attractive to the haulers to, to want this business. And the fact that we just have it on one day, um, some people like that, you know, the, the bigger haulers like that because then they can just come in and they can do us on Friday and that's all they're going to do on that day.
That day won't change then?
No, that, that, the intent is not to change it, correct.
I'd just like to make comment, uh, I think it's one of the bargains of ser, of the services that we do have because they do a real good job. I mean, you, you know, they, there's rules about what you're supposed to do with putting your trash. I mean, if you set an extra bag next to it, they always get it.
Yeah.
They, they do a little bit extra than what.
Yeah, they, they are, like I said, they're, they're very good. And I know the, the amount of calls that our utility billing office gets are very minimal. Yes, there are missed things and there's things that they don't pick up occasionally. Uh, but usually that's, just as often as it's because somebody didn't have it out on time or something like that as it is that the hauler. And they, they've been very responsive to go back and pick something up if they did miss it. So, uh, it, it's, it's good. I, I wish we had had multiple bids. The Waste Management and, uh, Republic Services chose not to bid, uh, but at least we got a good bid. And, and I talked to another community, uh, at a meeting today and they had bids and their bids, another community had bids in the twenty dollars, uh, per month range for similar services. So, uh, I, I think we're, we're competitive and, and will continue to be, uh, in the right range for these services. Uh, the other thing that I had was, uh, we have an advertisement out right now for a part-time code enforcement officer. It went in the paper yesterday. Um, we're going to sort of restructure with the retirement, the upcoming retirement of, uh, Eileen Minemeyer. We're going to do some restructuring and, and try to get somebody in to help with the code enforcement, both property maintenance, zoning, uh, grass, all the different things, whatever that person is. So if anyone is aware of somebody who wants a, a part-time job and wants to tell people that, uh, their grass is too high and, and those things, um, uh, send their resume in and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll try to find somebody. But that's, uh, that is out there right now. We're trying to find the right person for that, uh, for that job. That's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager this evening?
What kind of part-time hours are you looking at?
We're thinking averaging probably sixteen hours a week, uh, but probably in the summertime that would be more. But then in the wintertime, it would probably be less. So if somebody who isn't really looking at this as their, uh, means of supporting themselves is probably not it, but wants to do something and maybe help out the community, uh, is what we're looking at.
Okay, moving on, committee reports, service?
Nothing tonight.
Safety?
Just appreciate that the Fourth of July went well, uh, really no significant, uh, events. The one thing I did hear on the radio is the state of Ohio has a bill, I don't know how far along it is, repealing the law on fire, individuals will be able to have, uh, like, commercial-type fireworks. I'm not exactly sure on how.
Yeah, I, I don't think they're sure yet, um.
I just heard, I just heard.
Yeah, I've followed it a little bit, I'm no expert on it. But ours would go to, we, well, we, I know we have our own code, but do we change it to match the higher vice code now?
We probably, yeah, I think ours matches the higher vice code.
So cities can still have their own ordinances.
Well, right, that's kind of why I brought it up.
Yeah.
If it does come.
It, yeah, it'll be up to the, us and the residents to make that decision.
And I, I don't know how the, the chiefs feel about, you know, what, I'd take a lot of value in their opinion as far as.
Yeah, we have not really discussed it too much, but just because it has been pending. Uh, but if it does pass, then we will, well, we'll look into it a little bit more.
Yeah, I'm just kind of surprised.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to be a little controversial, so we'll see how it goes at the state level.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Uh, we do not have a financing audit. Um, community affairs?
Nothing tonight.
Any old business? Any new business? Open discussion. Mr. Edwards?
Um, I don't think I have anything tonight.
Uh, I don't have anything, Mayor.
Mr. Greenwood? Mr. McGill? Mrs. Middlestetter? Seager Lawson?
Uh, I guess I'm, I'm happy that we're supporting the schools and the school football program. I think that's, uh, the right thing to do. I personally will be there every Friday night because my son is now a freshman and is going to at least be standing on the sidelines. Uh, and my husband is actually one of the coaches, so we'll be down there every Friday night.
That is wonderful. Um, this is our last meeting for the Lions Club, so I hope people do show up for the Lions Club and have, have a safe event. Um, we will not be meeting again, um, for a few weeks, almost a month.
August twenty-eighth.
August twenty-eighth of, uh, so it's going to be a while. So that is all I have. This is open discussion. If anyone in the audience would like to get up? I'm looking around. Uh, does any other member of, uh, council have any other business to come before us this evening, this, at this council meeting?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.